Okay, so thanks very much for that. So everybody connected, everybody's comfortable and happy.
Let's do volume up.
We just make sure everything's okay. Yeah, we're happy, so fine. Okay, everybody here is okay. Yep, okay. So we've now started the meeting and webcast, so you'll know the rules and how we need to follow. So first of all, before we get into the meeting and the agenda, I have some sad news to announce. Many of you will know. councillor Lloyd Williams, who died recently. I'd like to just read out a tribute to him. So if we can, afterwards we'll have a period of just a few seconds of reflection to remember this particular councillor. So Lloyd was a farmer from the Wines and Asser where he lived with his wife Margaret. They have two daughters, Mary and Mari and Fionn. Lloyd was a true gentleman and was very well respected by all who knew him and worked with him. He was able to challenge with dignity and was always respectful to officers and fellow members. He was a very good listener. He made time for people and always enjoyed having a chat. He was a former member of Riddland Borough Council. He was a member of Dambisher County Council until 2008, representing the Ward of Shremecion. He was the leader of the independent group and vice chairman of the planning committee. And he was elected chairman of the county council in 2001 to 2000 and 2001. And was a great ambassador for Dambisher. I think we need to join with us and sending our respects to his family. He will be sorely missed by so many people. So can I, can we just have a few seconds of reflection, please? Okay, thank you. Thank you, members for that. Thank you.
Could I just come in that we also should note the passing of Nancy Fletcher-Williams. She was a councillor in the early days of Dambisher and I noticed that she died on the 3rd of January, aged 99. And she was a very special independent councillor representing Rhyl.
Thank you, Gwyneth. Thank you for that. That will be minuted as well. Thank you. Right, we'll go on to start with agenda item one, which is the apologies. So I have at the moment three apologies. I have councillor Mary Lloyd-Davis, councillor Emery Swin and councillor Davis. Are there any other apologists, please?
Just me, Alan.
Okay, thank you, Tina, for that. Are there any other apologists? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go on to agenda item two, which is the declaration of interests. And I'll ask Gary, who's working from home today, to come and explain all of that to us, please.
Thank you, Chair. Members will be aware of the requirements under the council's code of conduct to declare any personal or prejudicial interest in respect of any business to be considered at today's meeting. Such interests should be declared now or as soon as the councillor affected becomes aware that they have a personal or prejudicial interest in today's business. All members declaring an interest are required to state clearly what the interest is and to advise whether it's a personal interest or a personal and prejudicial interest as defined in the code of conduct. Any member declaring a prejudicial interest is required to leave the chamber for the duration of the business and can take no part in the proceedings. Members with a personal interest only may take part in the debate and any vote. If a personal or personal and prejudicial interest is declared today that has not previously been disclosed and recorded, the councillor concerned will be required to complete and sign a declaration of interest form which is available online. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we've not heard of any declarations yet, but it's obviously if, as you're going along, you realise that you may have, please, please raise that. Okay, we'll go on to agenda item three, which is urgent matters. I have two urgent matters. The first one is a question put forward by councillor Rees Thomas. And there's also a question to put forward by councillor Graham Timms. So we deal with them in the order they came in. So I will ask councillor Rees Thomas to raise his question, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I think that we need to start by wishing you a very happy St Dwyne Wednesday to all.
And it being St Dwyne Wednesday, I'm sure we would be giving red roses to one another, maybe next year. Thank you, Chair. I have one question. I don't have a second question, Chair. So excuse me if I just take a little bit of time with the introduction. Due to the staffing crisis in the care sector, the Plaid Cymru Group put a motion to full council asking that we write to the UK government, asking for immigration rules for care workers to be relaxed. I'm sure you all remember this. If you recall, the council supported this motion unanimously. Unfortunately, the answer of the UK government was a disappointing no. They did not intend to change the rules. However, at 5pm on Christmas Eve, the UK government announced that they changed their minds. I'm sure we all hope that changing their minds, having this change of heart wasn't the result of a day-long drinks party at Number 10. But I think we have to take that announcement made at a time where it had very little publicity at face value. It was announced afterwards that the new measures would come into effect in early 2022. So my question to the lead member, to councillor Bobby Fielding is, we are all aware of the critical shortage of care workers in Dambisher. So is the lead member aware of these welcome changes and have they come into effect locally? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rees, and thank you, Chair. I'm going to turn off my video just in case there's a hitch. Well, yes, Rees, I am certainly aware of these welcome changes. Locally here in Dambisher, we are also aware of the new ruling and are supporting providers who are keen to maximise any opportunities to recruit care workers in line with the UK government's relaxation of the immigration rules. It was indeed announced in December that care workers, care assistants and home care workers will be eligible for a health and care visa on a 12-month period. This will mean we will be able to recruit additional care workers to boost the adult social care workforce, which should make it quick and easier for social care employers to recruit eligible workers to fill the gaps. The coronavirus pandemic has highlighted a range of staff shortages within the social care sector, placing pressures on the existing workforce despite the incredible and tireless efforts of social care staff. Although I am quite sure my letter to the Prime Minister sent on your behalf helped it, helped it a bit. It has to be said, the changes to the legislation also followed on from a recommendation from the Migration Advisory Committee to make care workers and home carers eligible for the health and care visa and to add the occupation to the skilled worker shortage occupation list. At the time, the actual response I received from UK government, which I shared with you all, was rather disappointing. But looks as if a short time later, we got the result we wanted. This obviously won't solve the problem overnight, but it will help. And for that, I am very grateful. Thank you, Rees.
Thank you, Bobby. Can I just say that I'm sure that your letter helped tip the balance. Thank you very much for your reply.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for that. Right, the second. The second question put forward is by councillor Graham Timms. So councillor Timms, if you'd like to ask your question, please.
Dalgach bairne, st gadaeth. I'm going to touch on a similar area. And my question is also to councillor Bobby Fielding, a very popular lead member at the moment. And the question is, could you please give an update to the council on the problems relating to the provision of social care in the Dee Valley and across Dambisher?
Thank you. Thank you, Graham, and thank you, Chair. Well, yes, we are still experiencing challenges with the provision of social care across Dambisher as a whole. However, the unmet demand has reduced somewhat in the last month. And specifically by 138 hours, which means it's gone from 1301 hours at a maximum late last year to 1193. I've said that the wrong way around. I'm sure you realise that. The contracts and commissioning team are in discussions with Wrexham around a subregional rural approach for the south of the county, which has been, as you obviously realise, Graham, particularly problematic. A range of measures and initiatives have been agreed and are being monitored by the new DCC Social Care Recruitment and Retention Group. This is chaired by Nicola, Corporate Director for Communities. And this will include looking at pay rates of all roles across adult and children's social care and promoting our benefits. Additional dedicated HR resource has been put in place to support social care recruitment and retention. We have accessed additional Covid recovery funding to support recruitment to care for both external care providers and for our internal services. Providers are also taking initiatives on recruitment and retention, which includes such incentives as financial support towards driving lessons for new applicants, funding to purchase bikes for non-driving applicants, a variety of different golden hello unemployment referral schemes, boosted advertising on social media, online application platforms and supporting providers to apply for overseas workers permits via the Home Office initiatives. The contracts officers are currently looking at fee setting for care providers for 2022/23. And DCC will be actively advocating that all carers are paid the real living wage. The fees awarded to providers will ensure that this is possible. We continue to negotiate with new providers to provide for people's social care needs. And we have one new provider already who will begin within the next few weeks. That is subject to necessary checks. In addition, we are working with Health to access providers who they have existing business relationships with. I'm sure you will understand that although things are improving, this problem actually predates the pandemic. So improvements coming forward now will take time to make a real difference. Both the UK government and the Welsh government are certainly taking initiatives and putting more money into social care. But it's still not enough. And even when factoring in paying the real living wage, funding of social care most certainly does not compare with NHS. We are, however, making progress and we will keep trying. There are lots of other initiatives. I could go into Graham, but I'll leave it there for now. Nicola Stubbins is here and she can answer if you have any supplementary questions that are beyond me. I'm sure she'll be able to step in. So hopefully that will be okay for now.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Fielding. Thank you, Bobby.
Could I follow up with a question, Chair?
Yes, you can. If it's relevant to what we've just.
Okay. Yeah, I recognise that it's a huge problem in Dambisher and probably much wider as well. And it's a particular problem in the Dee Valley, which really desperately needs to be addressed. It seems that it's been caused by the cherry picking of care providers. By they choose the best packages and then suddenly, as soon as they think it doesn't suit them, that they drop these people with no help whatsoever and leave a huge hole. Please hear about the new initiatives, but obviously they'll take time to come through. And I just wonder, is it time to start thinking about moving back to providing social care through the county council rather than having masses and masses of other companies in contracts and all the rest of it? And then we can be ensured that we look after our staff and they're looking after our population.
Well, can I just come in on that? I'm sure Nicola might want to say something as well, but we are doing that as well, Graham. We've had recruitment days and recruitment, you know, drives all through the last, for as long as we've been able to do it over the last year or so. But it is equally as difficult for us within social care in-house to recruit as it is for the companies outside. But rest assured, you know, we really are trying extremely hard. Nicola, do you want to come in with any more?
Yeah, just on the comment about picking, which is obviously very concerning. I do think that's a difficult thing. And if you have evidence of that, Graham, then, you know, please let me know and we will talk to the providers about that. I think it's fair to say, you know, the majority, if not all of our social care providers are dedicated to that work and the role that they undertake, which is a crucial role. It has been a really challenging time. And as the lead member mentioned, you know, these issues predate the pandemic. And so as things have got more difficult and more challenging and staffing has become an issue, agencies have had no choice but to hand back packages of care. And I know, having discussions with them, that that has not been something that they have wanted to do. They have relationships with those individuals that have been built up sometimes over many years. So it tends to be the most difficult and complex cases because they are more labour intensive and therefore more difficult to provide that level of staffing for. So I certainly don't see evidence that providers are cherry picking in a negative context. But clearly, their staffing situation means that those more complex and challenging cases are more difficult for them to be able to resource sufficient staffing to meet those individual needs. But as I say, if you or any member has any evidence to the contrary, please raise that directly with me and I will look into those details and work with our providers to ensure that that is something that is not tolerated.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that. So right, so those questions have been answered. And we'll move on to agenda item four, which is the minutes of the meeting held on the 7th of December 2021. So we'll go on to page seven, page eight, page nine, page 10, which is the minutes, agenda item four. And also agenda item five, which is the flood event reports, investigation report. Page 11. On to page 12, agenda item six, appointment of director of Dambisher Ledger Limited. Page 13, agenda seven, role of young persons champion. And also agenda eight, which is proposal for members to adopt new ways of working, item 18. We've got page 14, notice of motion, agenda item nine. 15, agenda item 10, notice of motion.
Mr Chair.
Sorry.
Could I just come in to the notice of motion number nine?
Please.
It's just a technicality in the English. At this juncture, councillor Graham Timms proposed a question be put forward. I think the technical term is propose that the question be put.
Chair, that is correct. We can make that amendment.
Okay, so we're happy to continue now, are we? Happy with that? Yep. Okay, so we're on to, thank you for that, Gwyneth. Page 15, which is agenda 10, notice of motion. And then we're on to page 16, which is agenda item 11, notice of motion. Agenda 12, which is County Council Forward Work Programme, and the meeting concluded at 1:40. So are we happy to approve the minutes?
Approve the minutes.
Yep. No one against? Oh, right, okay. Are there any masses arising from the minutes, please?
Yes, if I can, Mr Chair.
If I can add to the matter that I raise. The Abigail Road in Hiddland, I have received a response. It wasn't the response I wanted. And I hope that they will reconsider the situation regarding Abigail Road. Because people with disabilities live along that road and they have to travel very far to cross that road. We must remember people less fortunate than ourselves who are in wheelchairs and so on. So hopefully, the county council and the officers will look at this matter again. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Anything else arising from the minutes? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on. And we'll go straight on to agenda item five, which is the Budget 2022/23 Final Proposals. And I'll ask councillor Julian Thompson to start this part of the meeting, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. So this is obviously the proposals for the budget for 2022 to 2023. Before I turn to the detail of the proposal, I should just like to take a few moments to summarise how we have arrived at where we are, the process we've been through as an authority, et cetera. I'm sure you'll all appreciate, well, this is the second year we've had to operate under Covid. However, this year, we've made every effort to have as normal a budget process as practicable. An amended process was put together and taken to Governance and Order Committee in the early summer. And following that, just before the summer break, we had an all-member budget workshop, which went through the process, the timetable, and went through what were the then current working assumptions. Over the summer period, services were requested to come forward with both suggested proposals for savings for the next financial year and also suggested strategic and non-strategic budget pressures. This request for pressures is a change from previous processes. We have in previous years essentially said if there's a pressure in one area of a service, it needs to be accommodated within the overall budget. This year, we made that change and went out to services to ask them for their pressures to be brought forward. All services provided this information. And I would like at this stage to thank all heads of service and their teams for the comprehensive piece of work they carried out. These proposals were then evaluated by the Budget Board over the autumn and during the service budget meetings that were held in the autumn. And the vast majority were recommended to be taken forward for approval, always with the caveat that it was subject to the settlement allowing for that. In October, all members were circulated with the latest working assumptions from the medium-term financial plan, together with copies of the latest budget book, and were asked to consider through the groups any proposals for additional pressures that they may wish to see brought forward, together with any suggested means of funding them. So whether it was some council tax or additional savings or the like. Either Steve or myself attended each of the groups in respect of this. And then following on from that, these proposals were brought forward and considered by the all-member budget session, which we had just before Christmas. Additionally, at that session, members were updated on the various changes in working assumptions which have been built into the updated medium-term financial plan. And throughout the leaders of our political groups have also received updates and briefings on the developing proposals. Of course, during the year, I've been updating my cabinet colleagues and Steve has been updating the senior leadership team. Also, the schools budget forum have been updated on developments. And discussions have been held with our trade unions through the LJCC. That's how we've got to here. So if I can now turn to the actual proposals which are in front of you. At the session just before Christmas, we said at that time that in order to meet the identified levels of pressures, we would need a clean uplift in revenue support grants of approximately 5.5%. As things turned out, of course, the RSG settlement was considerably different to what has happened in previous years. This coming year is the first of a three-year indicative budget, something we've been asking for for some considerable time. So we certainly welcome that. And the average settlement for 2022/23 is an uplift of 9.4%, with our figure just being just below that at 9.2%. The indicative figures for the next two years, however, are considerably lower at 3.5 and 2.4%, respectively. And ours, again, we assume will be appropriately slightly lower than that. So that we know for the forthcoming two years that the increase is not likely to come close to covering the shortfall that we're likely to have, given past experience. So some difficult decisions, no doubt, will need to be made in the new council. The reason that this settlement is considerably different from what we've come to expect is the fact that there were a number of significant new responsibilities which have been put into the settlement for which we've not previously had to deal. And there's four main areas there. First, incorporation of pay for both the teaching and non-teaching staff, that's normally been dealt with by means of separate grants. And of course, in terms of non-teaching pay award, this has not yet been agreed. So they've only been able to function on a best estimate to factor into the figures. We sort of touched on this in the questions that we had just prior to this. But one of the other new requirements was for the real living wage for social care staff, both our internal staff and for us to administer payments on behalf of the private sector providers as well. Now, the third area relates to funding for the core operational costs of running the new corporate joint committees, which we're all aware of, will be coming into force imminently. Again, as this will be the first year of those committees, it's been primarily based on a best estimate of what the committee will set as a budget for itself. Of course, we will have to pick up our share of that accordingly. And the final major area is that I'm sure you will be aware by now that the Covid hardship fund will cease as of the 31st of March. We have, of course, utilised that considerably over the last two years. We have, of course, utilised that considerably over the last two years. I think we drew down around about £23 million the first year of its operation and make claims, or will make claims, for around about £13 million in the current financial year. And of course, even with the best of circumstances, it's unlikely there will not be some additional costs incurred in the next financial year as the result of Covid, so we need to actually make some allowance for that within the proposals. It's slightly complicated by the fact that no actual costs have been attributed within the settlement to each of those items. However, our best estimate would equate it to roughly somewhere in the region of around about 5.79 million, which would equate to about, just shy of 40% of that 9.2% uplift, which can be attributed to those four areas of new responsibility. So just in comparison, referring back to what I said at the meeting in December, if you take that out, and particularly around, it's not exact science, removing that would equate to a clean uplift of around about 5.65%, which was the border that we were actually looking at pre-Christmas. In addition to that, there's round about £275,000, which you'll see in the paper, of legitimate transfers in, which happen every year, and those will be passported to the relevant services. So if I can now turn to some of the issues which are detailed in your reports on page nineteen and page twenty, in terms of some of the pressures that we're actually looking to address as part of this budget. The first four bullet points there, we essentially are ones that we have little control over. Those relate to increases in pay, inflation, the fire service levy, and the allowance for increasing the amount for the council tax deduction scheme to meet the actual demand figure. The next two items there relate to schools. And first, the significant area there is to recognise the inflationary pressures, which includes the teaching pay award, which is an increase of 3.769 million. And in addition to that, we also recognise changes to the school demographic population of just over £600,000. So what essentially that means is that if school rolls go up, we pass the additional funding through to schools. Not all authorities do that, but we have done for a number of years now. So schools overall will see additional, just shy of 4.4 million pounds into the delegated budget. Again, we've spoken about pressures in community support services for a long time. There's two elements to the proposal in front of you, which total an extra 3.127 million going into the budget. The majority of that, round about £2 million, is to meet increased demand pressures, and the balance being the element for the real living wage for the private sector. And very much in a similar factor, three-quarters of a million there for education and children's services, again relating to the cost of demand for out-of-town replacements and recruitment. And half a million pounds to meet the pressure, which is within school transport. So those, to a certain extent, are all areas where we're just meeting demand or recognising the increasing costs. If we turn now to something, I suppose, where we could say where we have some choice, there's a proposal to put in, just shy of 1.3 million pounds there, to invest in various areas that could be loosely called as priorities. So that's investment in taking forward the carbon zero project, a small extra amount to finalise the currently on-site rail flood scheme. You'll recall that full council earlier in this year voted to increase the highways' capital investment to four million, so there's an element there to potentially borrow to allow for that to happen, to improve our road networks. Whilst I'm primarily talking about the revenue settlement, they also announced the capital allocations, the unhypothecated grants, which we use primarily to support the block allocations. Those were actually reduced this year to make up that figure, so that we would have the same amount to spend on the block allocations. In terms of capital, we would need to put in £175,000 of revenue to support that additional potential borrowing. And then finally, you'll be aware that we've been undertaking a piece of work in terms of horizon scanning to see some capital projects over the next five to 10 years, and also there will be a new corporate plan, obviously, for the new council, so the proposal to put £350,000 in there to pump prime any of those projects. I referred a little bit earlier, when I was going through the process, about the service non-strategic pressures, and said that the vast majority had been recommended for approval. Obviously, the settlement allows us to be able to incorporate those within the suggested proposals, so that's an extra 1.111 million, and that's summarised in Appendix Two to your report. That figure for the corporate joint committee, I referred to earlier in terms of core pressures, again, it's based on an estimate that is round about £300,000 that we're proposing to put in in the first year. And in terms of mitigating the loss of the Covid hardship fund, just shy of £2 million has been included within the proposals for that. It'll be used for any one-off unavoidable costs in the next financial year, and hopefully by the end of next year, there will be no requirement for that, so it would be the first option to be able to be given up as a budget saving for the next budget round. So to summarise that, all those pressures put together come to 17.6 million pounds. To have met that purely from the settlement, we'd have needed an uplift of round about 11%. As I said, our uplift is actually 9.2%, which generates round about £15 million. So the funding gap is round about 2.6 million pounds. And in order to bridge that gap, that would come from three effective areas. An increase in fees and charges, in line with our agreed fees and charges policy, so basically they should increase by inflation, unless there's a very good reason why not, that would garner an extra £120,000. There are operational efficiencies for £634,000, which have been identified through the process I went through, and which fall within head of service delegated responsibility. And those are summarised in Appendix Two of the report. And the final element, of course, is the one that everybody always quite concerned with quite correctly, and that's the level of council tax. And the recommendation that I'm putting in front of you today is the council tax increased by 2.95%, which will generate the balancing figure of just over 1.8 billion pounds of additional revenue. This compares to an increase of just shy of 4% and just over 4% in the last two years, and to the current inflation level, which is running at the moment at just over 5%. So I think we would all agree that council tax burden has increased for our residents, and we wouldn't want to be increasing it more than was absolutely necessary to be able to deliver the levels of pressure that I've identified to you. And I think that an increase, a below-inflation increase of 2.95% is the maximum that would be necessary to deliver those, and we shouldn't therefore be increasing it by any more than that. The final recommendation that's in front of you, colleagues, is in line with what we've done in previous years, where we've had a very late settlement announcement. This year, the final settlement won't be issued until March time. It's to delegate to Steve as Section 151, in conjunction with myself as the lead member, authorisation to use up to half a million pounds of cash to balance the budget, should there be any degree of movement between the draft and final settlement figures. We don't think it's very likely. Welsh Government have advised it is very unlikely that there's going to be any significant movement, but we just need to cover off that possibility, because obviously, all decisions and the bills will have been partway to be printed by the time those are announced. So in summary, therefore, ladies and gentlemen, this is a good budget. It enables us to meet identified pressures of about 11.8 million pounds and to address those new responsibilities I went through, to round about 5.8 million pounds. As I say, it's slightly difficult to calculate those in terms of no cost actually being assessed to them, but that was our best assessment on that. When individual service efficiencies and additional pressures have been factored in, every service will see an increase in their base budget. Neither schools nor community support services have been required to find any efficiencies as part of these proposals. As I say, council tax is an ever-increasing burden, and we would only want to look to increase that at the absolute minimum amount to be able to deliver those pressures. So I think at that point, Chair, sorry, I know it took a little while to do that, but I think it's important that we went through it in a little bit of detail, so members were exactly clear on what the proposals were and what we were asking of them. I don't know whether Steve would like to add anything to that, but other than that, I'm very happy to take questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that very comprehensive journey. Thank you, Julian. Are you wanting to come in at this point, Steve?
Yeah, please, Chair, just very briefly. I just want to just mention the big items that came in, so the pay, the allocation for pay and the real living wage in social care settings, et cetera. Because those figures weren't clear in the settlement, we have worked with all other local authorities, both in Wales and regionally, to try and get a joint approach as to what we think should go in for those items, and we've worked with the WLGA as well, so it's not just those figures that are in for those items, so the estimate for the pay rise, et cetera, are sort of, they're not just me sitting in a room, coming up with those figures. We've worked regionally and nationally to come up with what the assumptions are behind those figures, just to give you some assurance around that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that, Steve. Right, firstly, I've got Paul Pendleton, who wants to ask a question, and then councillor Glenn Swengler. So Paul, please, if you want to come forward.
Thanks, Chair. I've got a couple of questions. 2.95% is better than we were expecting. It's still not great, though. I've done a quick bit of mathematical calculations during the period, during the term of this council. Council tax is going to be about 25%. So you might say 2.95% today is not bad at all, but yeah, that's what's gone on already. It's a major increase in the last four or five years. I note that something like £14 million a year is servicing loans for capital projects like the Queen's market in rail, which is already tens of millions of pounds over budget and has yet to put a spade in the ground as far as I know. Is it fair for us to pass on the costs of mismanaged contracts to our residents and expect them to pay that, when, as you say, the cost of living has gone incredibly? Also, you mentioned horizon scanning for capital works. What are those capital works and what will they cost? And will there be further debts that our residents will expect to pay their council tax? Thank you.
Do you want to come and answer those, Julian?
I'm in your hands, Chair. I'll either answer those, or if you want to take another couple of questions, and I'll answer them altogether, it's up to you.
Okay. Glenn, do you want to come in and ask your question, and then Julian come back? Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thanks very much. Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. The cost of living is at its highest in over thirty years. The retail price index stands at 7.5%. Gas and electricity prices are soaring, anticipated to rise by another 50%. Food prices are surging, high national insurance payments to be introduced. We now have the situation where too many of our residents have to decide between eat or heat. Any bill dropping through the letterbox is opened with dread. Budgets are extremely tight. Now, the money from Welsh Government to the council is higher than expected, and that is very welcome, and I realise that Dembishy County Council will have to make choices despite the extra money. However, DCC has a budget in excess of well over £200 million and is able to move money around as needed. This is not an option available to the vast majority of our residents. Now, the cost of even more Dembishy individuals dropping into poverty, losing their homes, requiring free school meals, accessing healthcare, family breakdowns, et cetera, will ultimately cost the council a lot more money. So I propose that for the year, and I propose that for the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, council does not increase the council tax, has a zero rate like Dembishy, like Dembey Town Council has again this year, does not increase the council tax, and supports the hard-working people of Dembishy during these very, very difficult times. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for those questions. Do you want to come back, Julian, on these?
Yes, of course. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you very much, everybody. So going on to Paul's questions first. Yes, 2.95% is not ideal. I'm sure we would all love, particularly in an election year, to have a lower level of figures, but it needs to be a realistic figure that can actually be delivered and will deliver the level of services which our residents actually expect. Yes, there is a significant figure that is within our budget for servicing historical capital expenditure. That's for a whole range of things, all of the schools, the flood policies that we've done, and some of those, as you well know, go back some considerable time that we obviously paid, because they're paid off usually over at least a 25-year period. I would dispute your use of the phrase mismanaged contracts. In construction projects, yes, sometimes projects go over and above budgets. It's inevitable that happens. It happens in all walks of life. We do everything at all times to minimise the impact in terms of that. There will be a separate report that will be coming back to Cabinet in terms of the project that you actually named next month, and I'm sure we can have a good debate about that at that point. In terms of your question about horizon scanning, I can't remember, to be fair, whether you were present at the July Budget Workshop, when Steve and I went through the fact that we, in order to be able to make some sort of forward planning for what we might be likely to need in terms of capital, we asked services to come forward with what they thought they would be likely to need over the next five to 10 years. And that's basically a big, long wishlist, which comes to over £180 million, and we're clearly never going to be able to meet anywhere near all of that. But it was just to give some sort of idea of the scale that would actually be needed. If, all other things being equal, clearly, each individual scheme would need to come forward, it would need to develop its own business case, need to go through all of our internal processes before it was actually added into the capital plan. But it's inevitable that some of those schemes, and particularly in the light of the fact that we will have a new corporate plan in the next 12 months, and that will require some element of funding as well, it was appropriate that there was some budget allocated to meeting that. So that's really what the intention was within the funding for that. So I hope that clarifies that. Glenn, obviously, I don't know whether you've got a second for your proposal, but just to clarify matters, 2.95%, which is my proposal for increasing council tax. to clarify matters, 2.95%, which is my proposal for increasing council tax, gives us a 1.723 million pounds of income. Obviously, if that were to be carried, that your proposal at 0%, I would clearly need from you which of those, which of those 17 million pounds of pressures you would not be meeting, because that would essentially be, or which services you were expecting to pick up that 1.7 million pounds of cuts, because there would be no other methodology that we would be able to do to deliver that. So I think, I think it's a bit pat to say, to make a proposal without how you're going to actually fund that. So I would push that one back to you, please, Glenn.
Okay, thank you, Julian. Do you want to come back on that, Glenn, or can I go to councillor Graham Tims? And then I'll come back because there has been a proposal and whether there'd be a second, and I felt that I would let it run on a little bit so that councillors could have a bit more information before they come back to perhaps to second or support the proposal. So do you want to come back, Glenn?
Yeah, I'll come back quickly. It was a proposal, so that does require a second. I'd pass that back to Gary to clarify that, please. And should that be done now?
Yeah, if you move an amendment, then you need a second for that amendment. It's a question for the chair as to whether or not you want to do that now or later. But if you do have a second, then the debate moves to whether or not to accept that amendment. And there would then need to be a vote on that amendment. If that amendment carried, then the recommendation would be altered and the substantive resolution would be as reflected by the amendment. If the amendment fails, then the recommendation stays as is. So if you have a second, then that would mean that we would need to debate that before we could move on to any other matters in respect of the rest of the report.
Okay, okay, so I'll ask the question, do we have support for that proposal? Have a second. We have Gwyneth? Yeah, Gwyneth Ellis, okay. Thank you.
So Chair, my advice is that you need to, members need to debate that amendment and then move to a vote on that amendment before going back to the substantive recommendations.
So we'll do that then, so.
Chair, if I may, I think the onus then is on the mover of the amendment to provide, that's only half a proposal. The other half will be how that would be proposed to be funded.
Yep.
We haven't heard that.
Thanks very much. So do you want to come back on that now, Glenn, please?
As I mentioned in my little speech there, that Dambisher County Council has a budget 200 and nearly quarter of a billion pounds. I'm sure that our, excuse me, I've got the dog barking, I shall move.
Is the dog supporting or opposing your motion?
No, she doesn't care, she doesn't care as long as it's got a sock. Yeah. So we have a budget of 200, yeah, a quarter of a billion pounds getting close to. Now, I'm sure that our very clever people in finance can work around some of those costs. And as I mentioned also, that by increasing the council tax in, under extremely difficult circumstances at the moment, we are going to end up putting more and more people under pressure, sending them into poverty, and we are going to be increasing our costs elsewhere, further down the line in social services, free school meals, et cetera, all the things that I mentioned before. And I feel that just for this year, 2022-23, that for the people of Dambisher, these are the working people of Dambisher, I'm not talking about the very poorest because they're going to get help with their council tax and stuff like that, it's those people that are just over that line, the ones that are working, that are going to have another increase on top of their cost of living with food and power prices, et cetera. And we are going to just send them further and further into more and more trouble. Don't forget also, the gas and electricity prices are going to be going up again come April, and on top of that, they're going to be paying extra national insurance payments. I just think that this, for this year, is a good idea to show our support to the people of the county and just not miss council tax this year. Thank you.
I noticed Steve and Gary both want to come in. I will defer to their greater legal and financial knowledge. But for me, I don't think that that actually meets the requirements, Glenn. We have to set a balanced budget. If there's a 1.7 million pound hole in it, which hasn't got anything allocated to it, that would not, to me, constitute a balanced budget. I think we actually need a form, if you're going to make a proposal along those lines, which you're perfectly allowed to do, of course, you need to indicate how you're, what pressures, either what pressures that you're not going to fund or which areas that you expect services to make budget cuts in, because those are the only two options to actually fill that gap. But I'll hand over to Steve and Gary, who may well contradict me.
Can we just come in quickly, because I was just going to say the same thing as you just said, Julian, that the options of how to fund it are basically the list of pressures that are in the report. So, you know, removing some of those pressures, saying no to some of those pressures, some of them will happen anyway. So some of them, you can say no to funding them, but there'll be an overspend next year and some of them are choice. So you could look at them or it's giving services a savings target now, it's late in the day, and we will have to go back to services and see what cuts that they can come up with, but they will be cut because we have taken the 1% efficiency off services or revisiting the savings targets given to schools and community support services. So it's either cutting the pressures that we've put in or savings targets for services.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Gary, you want to come in, please?
I was just, really just to support what Steve has said, members are obliged to make decisions on the basis of objective evidence. And I think if members are to vote on a change to the rate of the council tax, then they should at least have the information as to how that funding gap would be met. The other reason I put my hand up was that, just to remind members, it's not really appropriate for us to use the chat function in a publicly webcast meeting and that any debate by members should be through the chair.
Thank you for that. Councillor Graham Tims, I've got three of the speakers, so it may well help to move the discussion on. So there's Graham Tims, councillor Brian Jones, and then councillor Gwyneth Ellis following. So councillor Tims, please.
Sure, I was going to make a different comment apart from the proposed change in the motion. If it's appropriate to do that now.
Chair, it's a matter for you, but I think in order to try and focus the debate and we don't lose track of where we are, we should deal with the proposed amendment first. If councillor Tims' comment relates to that, fine, it's a matter for you as chair. Right, suggested if councillor Tims wants to discuss any other aspect of the report, that we can do that when the amendment has been dealt with.
Yeah, I intend to bring up another matter, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Jones, do you want to add anything to this debate or is there another?
I'll similarly fall in line with councillor Tims and I'll bring my point after you've dealt with this matter.
Okay. Councillor Ellis, he shows a similar theme.
Dear阁下, I'd like to speak on this point, please. In order to support this amendment, I feel that the assessment of impact of this increase in council tax, that it isn't suitable when we look at the healthier Dambisher item. There is no recognition that loss of income is going to have a negative impact on people's health in the county. In the same vein, in the more equal Dambisher, it says that the impact will be neutral without recognising that there's going to be a substantial impact on families' income if the council tax is increased. So I feel that we're having to make a decision here where we've been presented with a report which is unfair, which it says that the impact is going to be positive or neutral, and I don't feel that that is necessarily true. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. How do we want to play that? Do we want, can I ask advice, Gary? Do we need to take a vote on this at the moment?
You have an amendment that's been moved and seconded, so it's a valid amendment and therefore can be put to the vote. It's a matter for you as chair, if members have had their say in respect of this particular amendment, then the amendment can be put to the vote.
Gary, can I just ask, is it an acceptable amendment without actually saying how it's going to be costed?
Well, the, as a matter of law, the amendment can be moved. It's a matter for members whether they think that the amendment can be made without a credible proposal as to how it would be funded. I defer to Stephen that, and I think Steve set out what the basis of any, of the impact would be if the amendment were passed. But it's a matter for members whether or not they agree with the amendment or not.
Okay, so, right, okay, so shall we take a vote on it? Is it appropriate for us to take a vote on it in view of what's been said?
Can I come in here, please, Chair? Can I have comments from the officers or Julian on what Gwyneth said, councillor Gwyneth Ellis said? I think what she said is totally reasonable. Thank you.
Do you want to come back in on that, Gary? Or Julian?
I think I was probably going to back that one in Steve's direction.
Yeah, do you want me to come in there? Yeah, the assessment's always difficult because the primary reason for the assessment of, you know, the neutral impact, while recognising that any increase in council tax has an impact on individuals' budgets, is that in Wales, we still have the council tax reduction scheme. This means that the most vulnerable people and those on benefits do not pay the council tax. So that we have to balance that with the actual provision of services that we deliver for everyone in Dambisher. Now, you know, the investment in schools, the investment in the highways that's included in the budget is broadly felt to be a balanced approach. If there wasn't such a thing, so for in England, for example, where the CTRS doesn't exist, I think, you know, that there would be a lot more weight to that argument, but I think because of the protection for those who struggle to pay, that protection is there as part of our setup and part of what we agree. So that's just, you know, the feedback we've had over recent years. And it is always a difficult one to do the wellbeing impact assessment on a particular thing that helps fund every single service in the council. So with a council tax, you know, we wouldn't be able to fund schools, we wouldn't be able to fund social care, we wouldn't be able to fund, you know, every service in the council. So it is a difficult balancing act and we do just try to put both sides in that wellbeing impact assessment, but ultimately it's an assessment officers have made.
Okay, thanks very much. So I'm still at a loss here to decide which way we ought to be going, really, in terms of, we've had a proposal, we've had a second, we should go to the vote. I've got councillor Jeanette Chamberlain-Jones raising her hand.
Chair, Chair, can I just come in on the actual vote as well, please? Sorry. The only thing I was going to say that actually if this vote is carried, then there isn't a budget, there isn't a set of proposals that could be carried today, so that there isn't a budget, because you have to set a balanced budget. So if you're removing one part of it, the budget proposals are not valid because, so we would have to think about how we'd go away, I suppose. But that would be ultimately the consequence of only doing one side of the equation, so only taking away some of the income and not coming up with a proposal of where you're going to cut. That would mean that the actual budget itself would fall and we'd have to reconsider an approach, I think, would be, I'll take advice from Gary, but that would be my take on the position.
Yep. Jeanette, can?
Yeah, well, Steve's really answered, spoke on the question I was going to raise because I wouldn't want to vote on this, Chair, not knowing what cuts this would have, because we'd very much be in the dark on that then, wouldn't we? And that really is unfair on us all, not knowing where the cuts would fall. So Steve is quite right. I don't think that we should be taking a vote on this particular motion because we don't really know enough about it. It's a difficult one. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. Gary, do you want to come back in?
Thank you, Chair. It's really to support what Steve has said. Whilst you can vote on this amendment, voting on the amendment just changes the recommendation. You would then have to consider that recommendation as amended. And what you've heard from Steve is that it would not be possible for you to properly pass a budget without some serious recommendations as to what it is you were going to do to fund the gap that that amendment would have caused, because you have a legal responsibility to set a balanced budget. So I'm afraid it's not, it's not really good enough to say, we'll just do this. And if the amendment is passed, then you've had the advice from the 151 officer that we wouldn't be able to put the budget forward and we would have to go away and find savings. So in terms of the amendment, the amendment can be put, but members need to bear that in mind when they vote on the amendment.
Thank you for that. That's good advice. Can I bring in the chief executive Graham Bowes, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, listening to the debate, my conclusion for members, if it helps, is that 2.9, you're asking to consider a council tax rise of 2.95%. 2.95%. My view is that's a reasonable level of council tax. It has been well thought out and is presented in the report with reasons around the overall budget. The overall budget has to be taken together and it is difficult to start isolating certain parts of that budget. And ultimately, that 2.95% which balances our budget is reasonable and it is what is being recommended by your section 151 officer and your lead member and has been considered by Cabinet. So, I mean, I think when it comes to the vote, I would strongly be urging members to vote for a recommendation that the council tax increases by 2.95%. That is what the balanced budget requires. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Graham. Okay, so we will need to take a vote.
Absolutely. Chair, I would like to come back on Steve's answer to my comments, if that's possible, please.
Okay.
You know, I appreciate that the impact assessment may be as difficult, but I find it a bit unbelievable that under the healthier Dambisher, people's emotional and mental wellbeing is left blank. I mean, we all know that people are going to be stressing about paying their bills and an increase in council tax is going to increase that stress for people. It is going to have an impact on people's emotional and mental wellbeing, but that's not being considered at all in this report. I think that's wrong. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much for that. I've got, I can see two of the hands that we've got marching, and I've got Mary. Martin, do you want to come in first, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are living in difficult times and if you watch the news every morning at the moment, you know, President Putin is not helping by any means. And if there is war in Ukraine, then prices of oil and gas and everything else will go even higher. So, you know, but those are out of our control. What we have to deal with is a budget that we've been looking at now for nearly 12 months. And many of us have sat through all these budget sessions and I asked the question, why have these members from Ploughamry in this particular case not queried these figures before, not come up with proper proposals in the budget sessions and leaving this right to the last minute, which just happens to be before the local elections in May? So, you know, I'm extremely disappointed because we've gone through these figures. None of us particularly want to see council tax rises, but we've had these for the last four or five years. Considerable rises in many cases because our budgets have been cut. And if we end up by cutting services, the very people that, you know, Glenn is talking about will be possibly people who again will suffer. So I am sorry, I think we need to move this debate on. As much as I don't like to see council tax rises, we have to be realistic in these difficult times. Thank you.
Well said, Martin.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, councillor Tims.
Go on, please.
I hate to make a habit of this, but I'd like to propose that the question be put, that is, the motion, not the full motion, but the amendment be put, if that's in order.
Seconded.
That's in order, Chair.
Sorry, what was that?
Respectful point of order, remember, is entitled to ask that the question now be put.
Put to the vote?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go to the vote.
Do you want me just to clarify what I understand the amendment to be, Chair? I understand the amendment that's being proposed is to amend the recommendation contained in the report such that recommendation 3.3 would be that council approves a naught percent rise on the average council tax. I think that is the amendment that's being proposed. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so if members wish to support their amendment, they would be voting for. If they wanted to not accept the amendment, they'd be voting against.
Okay, so we're going to have a poll. Is that the way we're going to do it, Rodri? Yeah, we'll do a poll. Okay.
Chair, can I request a recorded vote, please?
If you want a recorded vote, Chair, you need one seventh of the members present, well, in ordinary times to stand up. But we don't want to view of all the midriffs if that's on screen. So what I would suggest, Chair, is that if we have those members who support a recorded vote to indicate to you, then if we have the required number, which I think in this case would be seven, then it can go to a recorded vote.
Okay, so do we have members that will support us? One, making a note. We apparently got seven on, so we'll have to do a recorded vote. Okay.
Can people put hands down just to avoid confusion?
Yeah, that would be good. Thank you. Martin, you've got your hand up.
Who with a seven, please?
Sorry?
Who with a seven? We can't see. No, we can't hear the names.
Yeah.
Sorry, members. We had councillor Paul Pendleton.
Well, if you press in the right hand, where the little
Gwyneth, Kensler, Seas Thomas, Alan Hughes, Aror Roberts. I think that was seven, I think, if I've missed someone. But do we have the members who wish to do the recorded vote, please put their hands up digitally? So there's no doubt then, so we can see them on screen as well, please. Aror Roberts, can you put your hand up digitally as well if you can? And Alan as well, I think you raised your hand earlier just to make sure that we know who has requested a recorded vote. Oh yeah, they've both put their hands up on screens, Chair. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have the seven. Okay, so we'll do, we'll set up a recorded vote. Is that okay?
So if I can just remind members, Chair, that with a recorded vote, I will read out the name of each member. And if each member can respond with either for, against, or abstain, or the Welsh equivalent, then I'll just remind members that the proposal is that the recommendation be amended such that the council approve an average council tax rise of naught percent. So if you're in favour of that amendment, you would vote for or oblige. If you're against that amendment, you would vote no or an Erbin. And if you wish to abstain, it would be abstain or a Matel. Is everybody okay for me to proceed?
Gary, just for clarity, and if you vote against the amendment, that's to retain the council tax at the recommended 2.95%, is it?
The issue is, if you vote for the amendment, you're voting to change the recommendation to naught percent. If you vote no in respect of the amendment, you're voting for the recommendation to remain as it is.
Then we'd have to vote on the amendment, I think. Sorry.
If I just make this as clear as I can, Chair. If you vote for the amendment, you are voting to change the recommendation such that the recommendation that relates to the average council tax rise would be changed from 2.95% to naught percent. If you vote no, you're voting for the average council tax rise recommendation to remain as is, at 2.95%. This is just an amendment. It is not the substantive motion. If the amendment is passed, the substantive recommendation is changed, but you will still have to vote on that. If the amendment does not pass, then it falls and the recommendations remain as they are unless amended by someone else.
Chair, can I just, before the, can I ask a question, please?
Please, please, Steve.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because if the recommendation is amended, the vote can't happen on the report.
Because 3.2 then wouldn't apply because
It's not a balanced budget then, is it? So just make that clear as well.
Yeah, because the point is this is just an amendment and you would go back to the position either before the amendment or with the amendment, and then you'd have to take the advice of your Section 151 officer in respect of the consequence of that amendment.
Can I come in, please? Councillor Merrick Davis. I just joined the meeting. But you voted. Sorry. I'm trying to come in, Mr. Chairman, just to say I haven't been able to be part of the discussion until four minutes past 11. So I will not be voting. I will abstain because of that reason. I just wanted to explain that's our ruling as a county council, so that is why I will be abstaining. Thank you.
Okay, so if you want to start the vote, then Gary, please.
Okay, I'll just clarify again, Chair. Sorry. Is it okay for me to go ahead, Chair?
Go ahead.
Just clarify again, what members are being asked to consider as an amendment? The amendment would be to change the recommendation from 2.95% in respect of council tax to naught percent. If the amendment falls, then we go back to the substantive recommendations as set out in the report. If the amendment passes, that would amend recommendation 3.3. And as you've heard from Steve, that would mean that he would have to give advice that you couldn't actually consider the budget. So if you are in favour of the amendment, you say yes or oblige. If you are against, you say no or an Erbin. And if you wish to abstain, it's abstain or a Matel. If everybody's clear with that, then I'll start reading out the names. Okay, Chair?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Okay. Councillor Alan James?
No.
Brian Blakely? Joan Butterfield?
No.
Jeanette Chamberlain-Jones?
No.
Ellie Chad?
No.
Anne Davis is not here. Gareth Davis? Gareth Davis?
No.
Sorry. I've got an echo here.
Are we counting the votes right?
No.
Mary Claude Davis?
A Matel.
Abstain.
Gwyneth Ellis?
Obleid.
Yes, in favour. No, against.
Peter M's not there. Bobby Feeley?
No. No.
Rachel Flynn?
No.
Tony Flynn?
No.
Hugh Hilditch-Roberts?
An Erbin.
No, against.
Martin Holland?
Against.
Alan Hughes?
All.
Hugh Irving?
Against.
Brian Jones?
Against.
Pat Jones?
Against.
Tina Jones, I think is last. Gwyneth Kensler?
Obleid.
In favour.
Lloyd Williams?
No.
Richard Maynon? Councillor Richard Maynon?
Agained. No.
Barry Meller?
No.
Melvin Mile?
Against.
Bob Murray?
Against.
Edvin Paddy?
Against.
Paul Pendleton?
All.
Pete Prendergast?
Against.
Adwell Roberts?
Obleid.
Yes.
No.
Peter Scott?
No.
Glenn Swangler?
All.
Andrew Thomas?
No.
Chris Thomas?
Obleid.
In favour.
Against.
Julian Thompson-Hill?
Against.
Graham Tims?
Against.
Joe Welsh? Joe Welsh. Cheryl Williams?
No.
David Williams? Edel Williams?
An Erbin.
Against.
Against.
Emma Swin? How did Emma Swin? Oh, sorry, apologies given. Mark Young?
Against.
And councillor Christine Maston?
Against.
Chair, by my calculation, that's seven votes for, 33 against and one abstention. So the amendment falls and you're back to debating the recommendations as set out on the report.
Thank you for that. Thank you, members, for that. We'll go back to the report and the proposals. There were a couple of questions that were wanting to be asked before we went to the vote. So can I call on councillor Brian Jones and then I think
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, going back, which seems an age ago now, an absolute age ago. Councillor Paul Pendleton's comment about Derbyshire's mismanagement of projects, it sent a shiver and a quiver down my spine. I hastily went through my lead member portfolio in case there was something in there he was pointing a finger at. And I'd just like to make the point, the glorious East Rail flood defence scheme, not the prettiest scheme in the world, but go talk to the residents that live close by and they'll tell you how grateful they are that Derbyshire put that project in place with the help of the Welsh Government funding. I'm talking about funding. I can't give you the exact amount, pounds, shillings and pence, but the project's been delivered on time, ahead of schedule. And when all the pennies drop into place, you will see that it's been delivered under budget by somewhere around a couple of million. So that's a good news story. So not everything's mismanaged. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Jones, which will have a positive spin on things. Councillor Tims, please.
I'll switch my camera off, Chair, because I think it's having problems with connections. I just wanted to say that in terms of the Welsh Government and the settlement this year, it's been a long time coming really to have this sort of settlement and it's going to make a real difference to people in Derbyshire. And having a three-year indication, although the indication's not very good, it will make a real difference. But I want to go back to something which I raised way, way back in 2017. And we started to talk about actually paying the real living wage to all Derbyshire workers and then hopefully beyond that. The Welsh Government pay the real living wage. The NHS in Wales pays the real living wage. And across the county, we were told in September that 14 councils are paying the real living wage to their workers. I'm not going to rehearse councillor Swangler's comments on the bleak times that are ahead for the least well-off. But this is something that we should be doing. We should be paying our workers a decent wage and that includes everybody on the staff. But particularly, we have a responsibility to pay that real living wage for them. I noticed in the Fylwood Work Programme that the consideration of that matter by council seems to now have moved to be in the next council. It was one of the first things that our council discussed. We need to move on this. There's only a small number of people left and I would urge the lead member to, after today's budget is passed, which I've no doubt it will be, to come back to us with proper proposals of how this to come back to us with proper proposals of how this can be introduced full-time. I'm not going to press any amendments or anything like that because I think other members want to bring things in as well. But let's try and take action this council if we possibly can.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You've got your hand up still, councillor Jones is.
Yes, yes, sorry, Chair. Listening to the dunce tones of councillor Graham Timms, very remiss of me not to mention when I was blowing the trumpet with the East Rail flood defence scheme, that I didn't mention Plangofflin 2020 scheme, which is another Dambisher-fronted-up scheme, which there was a big visit there yesterday. It's all going super duper. And I believe it will be completed on time and it's within the budget. So another good news story there for Dambisher and the associated stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I've got councillor Merrick Davis, please.
How do you operate? It's good to hear.
Demont, respected Chair, I don't know whether this has been raised because I haven't been able to join just recently. But if you look at point five on the page 18, that the Cabinet confirms that it has read. I think that should state that the council has read. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Merrick. Councillor John Butterfield, please.
On mute, John. Thank you. Sorry, there's always to be one, hasn't there? Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to support councillor Graham Timms on his highlighting the issues in and around the real living wage, which has been on our agenda for a long, long time now. So I am wanting to support that in that all the workforce will be in the future paid the real living wage. I think if we're talking about the wellbeing of the community in Dambisher, it will be challenged in the future. Obviously, we can't go into all the detail. But of course, it will be challenging and this will go a great way of alleviating some of the very, very low-paid in our camp. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for that. Right, now we need to go on to vote on the report that's ahead of us, I think, or before us. So Gary, how do you want?
Chair, did you want me to respond?
I'm just about to ask Gary, shall I go now on to the recommendations?
I think, Chair, probably to let the lead member to respond and to move recommendations. And I can just give a brief update on any issues that Julian doesn't cover.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Please, Julian, will you go ahead with that?
Yeah, first of all, I would echo comments about the benefits of us having had a long-lasting, three-year least indicative budget settlement. You know, the second and third years might not look too good, but at least, as we've always said, at least we then know what we're planning for and can work accordingly. So that certainly is a positive. Gary may want to add a bit more to this, but in terms of the discussions on the real living wage, I think it had been our intention very much to bring something forward before now with regards to this. The big stumbling block on that one is the fact that the National Pay Award still has not been agreed. And bringing forward anything in the absence of that is probably the biggest stumbling block to that. Because certainly on the indications of what we're potentially budgeting for, I think it would be likely that all of our staff probably would then be covered within the real living wage element of that. But Gary, I'm sure I'll pick up that in more detail. In terms of Merrick's comments, I could only assume that's a mistranslation or it's been from last week's Cabinet paper because the paper I've got in English says council. So I can only apologise if the one from the Cabinet paper has been included in the Welsh translation. So I think that's probably all I need to say about the question. So Gary, is there anything else you wanted to add on the real living wage?
Yeah, so first of all, just repeat the apology regarding the mistake on the Welsh version. Yes, it should be a council. Councillor Merrick-Lloyd Davis is right. In terms of the real living wage, all council staff were paid the real living wage at the time of the last pay deal. The pay deal that was to take effect on the 1st of April 2021 has still not been agreed nationally between the employers and the trade unions. The final offer that was made by the employers would have meant for us that all of our staff would be, continue to be paid the real living wage. The update of that is that some of the trade unions have balloted in respect of industrial action. One trade union's ballot did not meet the legal threshold in terms of turnout. Another union is currently balancing. We await confirmation from the National Joint Council of Employers and Trade Unions of where the negotiations will be finalised. But the deal that was offered would have meant that all of our staff would continue to be paid the real living wage. As I said, as councillor Thompson-Hill said, we would have brought a comprehensive report, but we're a little bit in limbo whilst we wait for those national negotiations to be completed.
Thank you, Gary. Gwyneth, you've got your hand up. Is that an old hand or is that?
It is very much an old hand, but I raised it anew. Yes, I just wanted to get back to the capital projects. And I do think that Dambisher has good track record. And would the central governments carried out their capital projects to these same careful extent as we do, then it would be better. And I have to say that I am feeling a lot of anger this year. Yet again, we local authorities have to bear the brunt of mismanagement in mainly Westminster. And all of the profligate spending that's been done there, it really is not fair on local government.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Gwyneth. Okay. Right, so we need to go now to vote on the recommendations of?
Mr. Cleary, okay?
Agenda item five, yes.
Can I ask a question, Sir Cleary?
You can.
Yeah, it's just really going on to Graham Timms's comments. Would it not be prudent in the budgeting round that we allocate the amount, the cost of living of the the living wage within our budget scheme? So that when they do agree, it's there? Or is it already included in there? I think it's very important that, to be positive, if we are trying to do it, we should be budgeting for it. And if it does come, it then goes straight ahead. If not, it's then there. I think so. Surely we have been doing it. Stephen will, like you say, it's already there or whatever.
Do you want to come back?
Yeah, just to confirm that when I do the calculation for pay, there is always an extra bit in for the real living wage to make sure that we do cover that. Because we assume that council will want us to make the adjustment. The problem is, what Gary and Julian was trying to say is that if the deal stays as what's on the table, that covers us for this year. There is contingency there as well available. I can't release that until the pay deal for 2122 is agreed. The 4% next year should also cover it, but I have also got contingency next year if that doesn't cover it. Because don't forget that real living wage is driven by a formula. So real living wage might be quite high next year. So we would look at it again once that settlement, the pay settlement is agreed. And you will have a free choice about committing to that each year to put those lower-paid staff back up to the real living wage. If the settlement in any one year doesn't, there's always contingency in to be able to do that because there's so few that would be impacted. It is very much just the lower couple of grades that would even possibly be impacted. So there is always a contingency in there for council to make that decision.
Okay, thanks, Steve. I've got councillor Paul Pendleton and then I'm going to cut off any more questions. So we're going to go to the vote. We need to move this on now, please. Okay, councillor Pendleton?
Thank you, Chair. I'm always happy for Brian Jones to mention me. I do look forward to it. And I'm happy Santa's doing the day to him too. But my reference to Dambisher's contract mismanagement is based on a report from Dambisher's Governance and Audit Committee last August, I do believe, in which they said that Dambisher's contract management was inadequate, to say the least. Small point, but that's it.
Thank you for that. Now we'll go forward. We've got the report, so lead member, Julian, do you want to read out the recommendations?
I will do. Thank you very much, Chair. So the recommendations are 3.1, denote the impact of the draft local government settlement 2022/2023. 3.2, the council supports the proposals outlined in Appendix 1 and detailed in Section 4 in order to finalise the budget for 2022/3. 3.3, the council approved the average council tax rise of 2.95% proposed. 3.4, the council delegate authority to the head of finance and property in consultation with the lead member for finance to adjust the use of cash included in the budget proposals by up to £500,000 if there is movement between the draft and final settlement figures in order to allow the setting of council tax in a timely manner. And 3.5, the council confirms it is read, understood and taken account of the wellbeing impact assessment. I would move those on block, Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I put up 3.6, please?
Oh, sorry, who was that?
That was Earl.
Sorry, I missed who. Somebody spoke.
3.6 would be, following on from Graham Timms's comment, it's not known that we're going for the living wage. And I think we should be saying that Dambisher's wording, Gary knows how to word it better, is that we are supporting it. We have budgeted for it. I think it needs to be highlighted. It's not highlighted at all. And I think we need to highlight that we have planned and have put in accordance before.
I'm in Gary's hands here, but I think that's going to be the subject of a separate paper and wouldn't be appropriate to be in this budget paper.
And I just intervene here. We're now voting. I did say there was a cutoff and we were going to vote. We've had the recommendations and we need to approve this budget recommendation. So we've already had a statement saying that we are in considering and working towards the real living wage. And that's in, you know, in the system at the moment. So I think we'll just go to this now report and vote on the report. So thanks very much, Earl. Thank you for that.
Can I second the proposal?
Okay, we've had a second for the proposal, which is Christine Marston. Are there any against? So far, we've got three against, which is Paul Pendlington.
Matel?
I thought you were going to do a recorded vote.
There's a lot of interference as well at the moment, so it's difficult to pick up some of the comments.
Sorry, Chair, I was just suggesting, would it be easier to do a poll on this? So at least we've got a record of the vote.
That's why I put my hand up, Chair, on a vote of this importance. I think it's best if we do a poll.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So you'll call the names out, Gary, will you?
Well, we can do it either by Zoom poll or I can do a roll call. It's entirely up to you.
Whatever's the quickest.
Right, we've had a proposal from Christine Martin. We do a Zoom call, so we'll do that. Okay.
So if I just ask Rodri to set up the Zoom poll and then just to confirm that if members are voting for the recommendations, they vote for, and if they're voting against the recommendations, they vote against, or they can abstain, and Rodri will tell everybody when the poll has been set up for them to participate.
Thanks. Thanks very much.
Hi, Members. I'll start the poll in a moment, so you should have the option, as Gary said, oblige an Erbin or a matel. I shall start the poll now and then I shall let the Chair know of the decision. So the poll should be up and if everyone has an option to click. So I shall wait for a couple of minutes for it to happen and I shall come back to Members.
Sorry, I can't find it.
Should be on your screen.
Members, if it doesn't come up on your screen, I should be able to see who has voted. And I can ask then the members who are, the names I do not see, I can ask them which they have voted, just to make sure.
It's not on my screen.
It's fine for me.
Please, please, can we get back in the chamber?
I've got nothing, sorry.
We can ask you how you want to vote. Okay.
Okay, it's Paul, Chair.
Paul, okay, thanks. I'm sorry, Chair, sorry to come in, but it was on the screen. I was about to vote and it's dropped off the screen. So can it be re-put up, please? We'll redo it. Okay.
Does it just come up on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should do.
It didn't come up on my, ours now.
It's back now. I'll vote now.
It'll always be relaunched, so can everyone just vote again now and then that'll be the final decision. Apologies.
I think I voted for the amendment again.
Oh, Brian, what do you like?
Do we have to vote again? Do we have to vote again now?
Yeah, if all members vote again, we have to redo the poll because some members did not pop up in time. Can some people just vote if they haven't already? And I'm going to close the poll now, so if you haven't voted, it won't be counted. Apologies.
Thirty-three, four. Three abstentions and three against. So this is carried, okay? Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
Or do they?
I might want to go on and I'm going to probably give this a kiss of death to go on to Agenda Item 6, council reduction scheme, because it shouldn't take very long. So I've just probably given it the kiss of death. And then after that, we'll have, say, a quarter of an hour break. Is everybody comfortable with that?
That's fine. That's fine, Alan. You're doing well.
No responses to it or very few. So we'll go straight on to Agenda Item 6, which is the council reduction scheme. And again, it's Julian and Steve. So Julian, if you'd like to introduce, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, I probably put the kiss of death on it as well, but hopefully this one should be pretty straightforward. You'll all be aware that going back to 2012, the former council tax benefit system was abolished and replaced by the new council tax reduction scheme. Welsh Government brought in an all Wales scheme, which needs to be approved on an annual basis. You'll see in Section 4.1 and 4.2 and 4.3 the amendments to the existing policy, which largely is due to up ratings. But we actually have no say over that anyway because that's all part of the national scheme and we just have to adopt that. The only areas that we have any discretion over are the three bullet points in Section 4.4, which you'll see there, which are all pretty straightforward. And we've been doing those for a number of years. So I think that's everything I needed to say. I don't know, Steve, you want to do other than that? Go straight to questions?
No, Julian, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Are there any comments? Gary, you've got your hand up.
Apologies, Chair, that should be down.
Okay, right. Are there any members who want to make any comments on this item? Okay, so we've got a recommendation. We've got a second for Agenda Item 6. Councillor Peter Scott, thank you, Peter, for that. Okay. So I think we'll go straight to that. We've got the recommendations. Do you want to read them out and then we'll go to the vote? And we're going to go for? vote? We're going to go for a Zoom poll again, if that's okay with members. Seems to work quite well. So if you can do the recommendations, Julian, and then.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Chair. So 3.1, the members adopt the council tax reduction schemes and prescribed requirements Wales Regulations 2013 and the council tax reduction schemes prescribed requirements and default scheme Wales Amendment Regulations 2022, that chips off the tongue, in respect of the 2223 financial year. And 3.2, the members approve the discretionary elements of the scheme shown in Section 4.4, the 2223 financial year.
Okay, so thanks for that. So we've had a proposal, we've had a second. So we're going to go to the vote. So just give Rodri a few seconds to get it all set up and then we'll give you some time to respond. Okay, so thanks very much. And then we're going to have a well-earned break. Please.
Again, members, I'll just start the poll now. So you should have the warning prompt up on the screen. And if you wish to vote for the proposals, against or abstain, all the options are there. I shall now wait for the Chair's notification to close the vote and then I shall let members know of the results.
Okay, so we've now closed the vote and the response has been it's unanimous support for this. So thank you very much, members. So that's gone through. That's been carried. What I propose, as I said earlier, is we have a 15-minute.
Point of order, please, Chair. Point of order, please, Chair.
And during the.
In the recorded vote on the amendment by councillor Swindler, that you were meant to ask for councillor Emerys Wynn's vote, but he'd given apologies.
So I'm Alorain.
Yes, I did call out his name and then I realised that he had provided apologies. So I haven't put anything against his name. I've just put that he's absent. Thank you very much.
Everybody, everybody happy? We're happy.
Yeah, we need a drink, Chair.
I will not be excited, unfortunately.
A large Scotch would be quite nice. If we come back a quarter past 12, that would be, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Agenda Item Seven, which is a notice of motion put forward by councillor Brian Jones on behalf of the Welsh Conservative Group for consideration by the full council. So if you'd like to put your motion forward, can I just remind, before I ask councillor Jones to put his motion forward, we normally have 30 minutes for motions and we've got four today. So just bearing in mind that we need to be pretty succinct and focused, I think. Not that you aren't normally, but just to give you a reminder. So councillor Brian Jones, if you could put forward your motion.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, yeah, thank you, Chair. Actually, I'm withdrawing my motion today. I had some communication late last night, members asking for clarification. So I need to tweak it. I'll be putting it in later today for the February 22 council meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Jones. That's very much appreciated. Right, we go on to Agenda Item Eight, which is notion of motion put forward by councillor Paul Pendleton on behalf of the Plaid Group for consideration for, by full council. So councillor Pendleton, please.
Thank you, Chair. So I had made mine as concise as possible because I didn't want to get timed out again. As most of you know, I put a motion in last December, but because of the time rules, I was timed out and left with less than 10 minutes to present it. I took advice from Gary that I could resubmit at a later date, which I've now done. However, I appreciate the motion I put in last December was quite prescriptive and would have meant officers had very little room to manoeuvre with what I was just going to do. So I've put a much more broadly worded motion in stage, we say. So officers will then have a lot more flexibility to address it and work with it in the best ways possible for them. So the motion is now that this council tasks officers to seek additional Welsh Government funding in order to fund a complete rebuild of Prestatten High School. I have thought that that motion itself is still slightly loosely worded. So is it possible for me to propose an amendment before we take a vote?
No. No.
Who is shouting at me?
Can we go to the Chair, please? Gary, do you want to come in on that? Is it normal procedure to amend something once and it's on the table?
If a member has a motion that they bring and they want to make or they wish to amend the wording in some way, then that's okay, provided it's not in effect a completely different motion.
It's not, it's a small amendment.
It would just, clearly councillor Pendleton can move his motion if he wishes to make a small amendment to it and that should be okay. We still then need a second.
Can I just clarify? I've got two members who put their hands up straight away. Is it in order to go to those two members first before the amendment or should we go to the amendment first?
Well, I think you should deal with councillor Pendleton first and then seek to bring other members in afterwards.
Okay, thanks very much. Thanks. Okay, Paul.
Thank you both. Can I continue without people shouting back, please? The amendment is basically based on the fact that in 2017, Prestatten High School was on the modernising education agenda and plans were actually drawn up in 2018 to build a new school. So I'd like to change my motion to say that this council tasks officers to seek additional Welsh Government funding in order to fund the complete rebuild of Prestatten High School based on early designs drawn up for the 21st Century Schools Programme that modernised to meet the current needs of secondary pupils in Prestatten and our climate change and ecological emergency declaration.
Okay.
And I say, thank you.
So that's a proposal. Do we have a second for that? Graham.
Me.
Councillor Swindler, yeah. Councillor Genshin is going to support that. Okay, okay. Shall I bring in then councillor Graham Tims and councillor Tony?
Ordinarily, Chair, once it's been moved and seconded, we'd ask the relevant lead member to respond first.
Yes, sorry, yes, sorry. So can I bring the lead member in? Sorry about that. Yep.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Paul. I just want to just explain the procedure that we have is obviously that the Modernised Education Board is the body that assesses the conditions of all schools in Dembisher and the state. And obviously, that is the process that we have adhered to really for maybe 14 years and seen some outstanding investments in some of our schools in Dembisher. Since being appointed lead member, I witnessed the completion of six schools, which have moved to new sites and had substantial refurbishments or extensions, namely Ascot Galan Clwyd, Rostry, Ascot Pambaras, Carrick Emblin, Christ the Word, and Ascot Llambe. This has seen over 60 million spent to provide modern first-class facilities, which our pupils deserve. Moving forward, we've committed to at least 51 million to the schemes in Bambi, starting with a new school for Ascot Plasbon Diffrin, with schemes emerging for Ascot Pendrav, Ascot Brinkothlen, Ascot Gwennant and then Behigh. And also in the second part of that is Ascot Dinas Bran and also Sinbridgetts as well, which obviously is in the mix on the second part. For other schools, we've used maintenance funds to target investments to meet needs. And for example, at Prestatten, we as an authority spent over 2 million to address urgent areas, which have included refurbishment labs, heating upgrades, new windows, toilets, et cetera. I myself, in the same situation as Prestatten, in the Ascot Brinhubrid is assessed at the same level as Ascot Prestatten and therefore has been evaluated by the Modernised Education Board on the surveys that they've done. What I think we need to be mindful is that every single member potentially has a school in award and every single member could put a motion forward, every single council wanting a new school in their area. The figures that the poll shared with you before Christmas, I think quoted something like 25 million for a new school. Well, in terms of ballpark figures, a new school for a statin high, based on standard construction costs, together with net cap and zero cost, would be in the region of 55 million. Therefore, the cost of the feasibility alone would be 850,000k. And I'm not aware, Paul, of plans being drawn up or a feasibility for Prestatten in 2017. I'll have to check with officers if they're here, but I was not aware of that. So I think that the way forward is, given the scale and the sums involved, it's important that a council has a process for determining the priority order for investment in school buildings. And the process is evidence-based, taking into account the respective needs of all schools to ensure that those in greatest need are dealt with first. A comprehensive condition survey of all schools was undertaken in order to identify the schools that required improvements and to inform the priorities that the works were taken upon. This was undertaken prior to the submission of the 21st Century Bambi proposals to Welsh Government, which have been at cabinet and scrutiny on numerous occasions. This survey was considered by the Modern Ed Board and provided an evidence base upon which they could recommend priority orders of schools that needed work. I would suggest, in the light of this motion and the one that is coming as well, because it seems to be a hot topic in Prestatten, that the Mod Ed Board could be asked to review the condition survey to see whether these have been significantly changed to the conditions of the school estate, which would call into question whether the current priority order of schools is still current and correct. The outcome of this review can be reported to Cabinet together with any recommendations the Mod Ed Board may have as a result. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary, you've got your hand up and I've got Graham Tims and councillor Tony Flynn. So do you want to come in first, Gary?
Yeah, well, effectively what you've had is, you've had the motion moved by councillor Pendleton and seconded. And then you've had, in effect, an amendment moved by councillor Hilditch Roberts. So you just need to ascertain whether there's a second for councillor Hilditch Roberts's amendment.
I can clarify if that wasn't amendment. You said you're suggesting something. You didn't say I'm making an amendment.
Well, if you can clarify with councillor Hilditch Roberts. Sorry, I took it to be that he was suggesting an amendment.
Yeah, I was suggesting an amendment as in the way forward with the Mod Ed Board, yes.
Yeah, I interpreted it that way as well. Okay, so do we have a second for that, please? Is that you? That's councillor Jeanette Chamberlain-Jones, yes?
Yeah, I can second that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay.
So essentially, the debate now should be on the amendment. And then when you've debated the amendment, you can vote on the amendment. And if the amendment carries, then that becomes the motion and you would vote on it as a substantive motion. If the amendment falls, you would return to the motion as put by councillor Pendleton.
Okay. So how do you want to do the vote? Shall we do it on the Zoom poll again?
I think you may have members who've got their hands up, Chair, indicating that they may wish to speak.
Okay, so councillor Tims, I'm pleased, and then councillor Tony Flynn.
Yeah, Chair, I did want to propose an amendment as well, but it may be that the amendment councillor Hugh Hilditch Roberts has presented maybe answer that. But maybe I could hear that amendment again, so I wasn't very clear about it.
Okay. Can you come and repeat?
I've got to remember what I said now, Graham. I would suggest that the Mod Ed Board could be asked to review the condition survey, and when I say survey of all schools, to see whether there have been any significant changes to the condition of the school's estate, which would call into question whether the current priority order of schools is still correct. The outcome of the review can then report it to Cabinet together with any recommendations that the Mod Ed Board may have as a result. So effectively, in a roundabout way, I'm saying, so if anybody who's sitting here who isn't in Bambi and have building plans at the moment, we will be reevaluating the priorities of those if and if they're in the right area. Yeah.
Okay. Are you happy with that, Graham?
Does that then delete the reference to Prestatten High School?
In my, yeah, in my view, addressing all schools.
Yeah, I'll tell you why. Because I was going to propose an amendment to add into it, the complete rebuild of Ascot Dinas Bran and Prestatten High School. Because if this motion gets through, then we're all going to be counting for our own schools and I'm going to look after mine as much as anybody else. So that's the, that's the situation, I feel.
Yeah, I agree with you, Graham, because I could put the motion that, you know, I want a new high school built in Rhythyn as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councillor Tony Flynn.
Thank you for that, Chair. First of all, I feel I need to declare an interest because I am a governor at Prestatten High School. I don't feel that this is, that the lead member that he's put forward is completely clean and crystal clear. And just as in the last meeting, the last council meeting, I had an amendment, which I know quite a lot of people were aware the exact wording. And I've carried this amendment through to today. Now, as I'm, as I'm not 100% happy with the amendment that the lead members put forward, I would like to put my amendment forward, if that's acceptable to you, Chair.
Chair, we can only really deal with one amendment at a time, otherwise we get in a mess. So we just need to deal with this amendment, which passes or falls. And then, and then if somebody wants to move a subsequent amendment, that's fine. But we can only deal with one at a time.
Okay, well, Chair, I think that, I think that the lead members slightly stitched me up here. So yes, I've already declared I'm a governor at Prestatten High School and I have been for 10 years. I've spent the last two years raising funds for children with special needs within Prestatten High School. And this has been, this has been what we have been fighting for. The Conservative Party have been fighting for this for years. The lead member knows we've had meetings around the table with him and Garron's and our only focus has been Prestatten High School. And I don't feel that our voice has been heard. The amendment I wanted to put forward was absolutely crystal clear. Now, I'm, as I say, I'm not happy with the wording that I've just heard. But of the two motions, for the sake of Prestatten High School, I will support the lead member here. And I would ask the, all the Conservatives to, to support the lead member, even though I do feel I've been hijacked in this matter. So I'll leave it at that, Chair.
Thank you for that, Tony.
Can I come back on that, please, Chair?
You can, yes.
Yeah. Hijacked, stitched up. Trust me, Tony, that's not me stitching you up. Basically, what I'm doing, Tony, is we are a long way away since we last had the, any discussions on Prestatten High and any, at the time we had a discussion, the priorities of the Mod Ed Board are exactly the same as they were when the papers went to Cabinet and scrutiny, which we've been through. All I'm doing is giving an opportunity, because we've had delays over Covid and funding, is that we're just checking, asking Mod Ed Board to check the current state of play, as we understand it. The recommendation that has been passed by this Cabinet is that it is still the situation. There's no stitch up, there's nothing. I've just been open and transparent because otherwise, we're going to have figures and debates outside of this arena that are not right and they're factory incorrect. So I'm going to make sure that that information is shared with every member so everyone understands the state of play and there is no intention to stitch anybody up.
Thank you, Hugh, for that. Are you okay with that now, Tony? You want to come back in before I go on to Mary? You're on mute, Tony, I think.
Sorry about that, Chair, I turned it off. No, I'm not happy, but I will support the lead member in his amendment. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, councillor Mary Lloyd-Davis, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to draw attention. I did send this in, I think. The abbreviations used. PHS and WG. I take WG as Welsh Government. And I take it that PHS is Prestatten High School. And in the Welsh version, it should be a Skollwyrdd Prestatten. It's difficult for the translator because they don't know what the abbreviations stand for. I take that point, Mr Chairman. The abbreviations have been difficult for the translator, but we will make sure that we make the amendments in the minutes. Thank you.
Assurance. I've got councillor Paul Pendleton. And then I've got Hugh. Is your hand an old hand or are you coming back?
Yeah, I've just had some clarity of information, which I don't know, maybe I should share before Paul speaks if he wants. I don't know.
Let me go to Paul, and then I'll come back to you to round it all up.
Thank you, Chair. Despite your request, we're going to be concise. Seems like I'm happy to have done that so far. I will support Hugh Hillich's amendment, because I'd put a very similar request in about two years ago and asked for this to be reviewed. At that time, I called it into scrutiny committee and it was denied. So it's a bit down the line. I'm making, Hugh, shut up. Thank you. So it's a bit further down the line than I'd like to be at this point. And I, like I said, I did request that Prestatten High School be put back on the agenda, so I'm happy for it to be put back on the agenda today. I would dispute Hugh's figures, but that's a debate from the day. As regards the two million pounds spent on Prestatten High School so far, I do know that about two thirds of that went on preparing the roof on three different occasions. But they've still got buckets in the corridors today, where maybe not, it's not raining, but generally. So without further ado, I'm a little disappointed we're not further down the line, but at least it's back on the agenda for now, or potentially will be when we vote on it in a moment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, Hugh, do you want to come back in?
Yeah, just to clarify, Paul mentioned that there were plans for Statin. The only master plan was actually other primary schools in Prestatten. There has been no specking of any high school done. And the figures I shared are ones I got from officers, which are based on the, you know, basic costs of the Welsh Government school builds and the size of the building, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Hugh Irvine, and then councillor Rachel. Is that you, Rachel?
Right. Did you call me in, Chairman?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, right. Well, firstly, I think I should just declare an interest, as I am a governor of Prestatten High School, been a great supporter of the school for a lot of years, children educated there, all the usual things. I don't entirely recognise the comments that councillor Pendleton just made, when he said that the two million pounds didn't go on refurbishments. I think the school have been very pleased at the amount of work that has been done. And certainly they're very proud of their new laboratories and all the various facilities there. And we need to remember, we've got one of the largest schools in Wales, the largest school, I think I'm right, secondary school in Derbyshire, and a very, very dedicated and committed head teacher and staff.
We've lost you, Hugh. Do you want to switch?
Same way, that's built in the same way that Christ the Word was constructed. But we have to live in the real world. I'm prepared to say, yes, it is a longer term aspiration of mine as the ward councillor for central ward that the school stands in. It would be a longer term aspiration, but even if we gave the plan the go ahead today, which of course is totally unthinkable, it would be quite a few years before it could be enacted. And therefore, under all the circumstances, I'm prepared to go with the lead member's recommendation. But bear in mind that I think Prestatten High School has been left out in a lot of these deliberations. And I would like to think that it would get very close consideration for where it stands in the modernising schools programme. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hugh. Rachel, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just wondered if Gary could just clarify what we're supposed to do now, obviously with our motion. Are we just, we're drawing it? But I would also like just to make it well known that this amendment was actually coming in December's meeting, and councillor Pendleton had ample time to present that motion at that meeting. And yet we are here again, where, you know, playing politics because a certain person doesn't want, actually, when was the last time, Paul Pendleton, we liked to ask this question, you went into Prestatten High School? Thank you, Chair.
I can answer that if you'd like me to. It was February two thousand and twenty, just before the lockdown, when I was invited to meet two young girls in year nine, who have actually been elected food poverty ambassadors for Wales. They had spoken at the Senate, they had spoken at Westminster, and they had asked me to get in touch to us, if I could then speak to Derbyshire County Council. I did email Derbyshire County Council, and I am yet to get a response. So that's when the last time I was in the school. Not that that's got anything to do with the state. This is not about me, or you, or any of us here. It's about children in Prestatten in a high school that was built in nineteen fifty six, and I've still got buckets in the corridors of water on the floor. It's you that's making political, not me. How dare you?
Chair, just as a point of order, Chair, just to let you know, I occasionally work in Prestatten High School, so I'm very well placed, councillor Pendleton, to say that I've been in Prestatten High School and I'm very aware of the issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Butfield, please.
Funny to say, Chair, we must get on. We've got a timeline on motions, and there is another motion to follow this. Thank you, Chair.
I'm very much aware of that. Can I just go back to you, councillor Pendleton? Have you withdrawn your motion now, and we're going to go ahead with?
Not yet. I'll go with Hugh's amendment and see how that gets on.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we've had a, Gwyneth, do you want to come in quickly?
Yes, very quickly. If someone works in a school, do they have to declare an interest?
Yes, I think that that would be an interest, yes, if somebody worked in a school that was part of the debate.
Chair, I did say in a sentence, I just said that I'm declaring interest. I work in school occasionally.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go to, should we go to vote then on the amendment? Have you got the amendment again, Gary?
Yes, I've got it noted here. That the Modernising Education Board be asked to review the condition survey of the school estate to see whether there has been any significant change to the condition of the school estate, which would call into question whether the current priority order of schools is still correct. The outcome of this review to be reported to Cabinet, together with any recommendations that the Modernising Education Board may have as a result.
Okay, so do you want to go to, shall we go to a Zoom vote again?
I think a Zoom vote would be sensible, Chair, yes. So just to remind members that if you're voting for the amendment, this is the amendment now, what I've just read out, or voting against the amendment. And if that becomes the, if the amendment is passed, it becomes a substantive motion upon which you'd need to vote again. And if it falls, then you have the motion put forward by councillor Pendleton. So this is on councillor Hugh Hilditch Roberts' amendment regarding the Modernised Education Board.
Okay, thanks for that. So you're all very clear, aren't you, of how you're going to vote? Thank you. Okay. So Roger's going to set that up, and I'll give you a few seconds.
Chair, there's a message in the chat from Cheryl, asking to repeat the amendment.
Okay, thanks. Can't see that. Thanks. Sorry, Gary, can you do that again, please?
Yeah. The Modernising Education Board be asked to review the condition survey of the school estate to see whether there has been any significant change to the condition of the estate, which would call into question whether the current priority order of schools is still correct. The outcome of this review to be reported to Cabinet, together with any recommendation that the Modernising Education Board may have as a result.
Hey, everybody clear now, aren't they? Good. Okay. Yeah, we're about, we'll send the Zoom now.
I'll launch the poll for the amendment now, and same as before, Blyd, and Erdin, or Matas. So I'll start the poll now.
Okay, we're going to end the poll now, so everybody's voted, I hope. Thirty-two, four, five against. No, no abstentions. Thanks very much for that.
Chair, that means that the amendment has passed, and therefore that's the substantive motion. It's a matter for you whether you want any further debate on that, or whether you want to go to the vote. And it's a matter for you whether you go to the vote by assent to the meeting, given the result of the amendment, or whether you want another Zoom poll to confirm.
I would like to go straight to the vote now, and whether we need another vote or not, considering the vote that just happened, I would be, I'd take your advice on it, Gary, but I'd be content.
I think, Chair, if you were to just ask whether or not you had the assent of the meeting in respect of the amended motion, given the result on the actual amendment itself. So if you just need to ask for people who are in favour to indicate, and anyone against, and anyone who wishes to abstain.
Okay, so I presume that people are for. Yep, I can see hands going up. Anybody against?
Sorry, Gary, can you clarify? I thought the votes in the amendments as well stood. Are you saying we can vote on something else if you want to? Sorry.
The motion has been the subject of an amendment. The amendment has been passed, which means that is now the substantive motion. It is possible for somebody else to move a subsequent amendment, should they wish to do so. In the absence of any subsequent amendment, the substantive motion needs to be voted on as amended. If there is a further amendment proposed and seconded, then you'd have to consider that amendment. And if that amendment passed, then that would become the substantive motion. So what you have in front of you now, the substantive motion, is the motion that was put by councillor Hugh Hilditch Roberts. If somebody wants to amend that again, then they can propose an amendment and second it, and members can vote on it. But at the moment, that's the substantive motion.
Can I propose we go with Hugh Hillich's amendment then, because that's going to make it much quicker for all?
We didn't hear that.
I'm proposing we go with Hugh Hillich's amendment that's just been passed.
So essentially, Chair, what we're saying, what councillor Pendleton is suggesting, is that the amendment that's been passed by councillor Hugh Hilditch Roberts should now go to the vote as the substantive motion. Given the result of the Zoom poll, it's a matter for you and for members. But given the fact that the result was quite clear, you could ask just for the assent of the meeting to confirm the substantive motion. So you just need to ask for people to indicate whether they're in favour, whether there was anybody against, or whether there was any abstention.
Yeah, thanks very much. I thought that's what we just.
Yes, I thought we did that. We were all in favour.
Just done. And there was nobody, there was no against or majority of four. I didn't see any.
I think for clarity's sake, Chair, because of the fact that we did have that, I think it would just be easier just to ask everyone who's in favour to show.
Okay. Yep. So everybody's in favour.
Is there anybody against?
Nobody against.
I am Glenn Swindler.
Okay, sorry, what did you say, Glenn?
Councillor Glenn Swindler and councillor Chris Thomas, I think, have indicated that they were against.
Okay.
Are there any abstentions, Chair?
Oh, Gwyneth wants as well against. Okay.
No, I'm abstaining, Chair.
Okay, okay, thanks. So that's clear. We can move on to the next agenda item. Yep, everybody happy with that? Yep. Okay, so this is agenda item nine, which is a notion of motion from councillor Tony Flynn.
Chair, we've just gone over half an hour, which means motion's now timed out.
Councillor Flynn, please.
Sorry to interrupt, Chair. I think councillor Pendleton's just made a comment in respect of the time limit and whether or not the motion is timed out. The Constitution says that we allow thirty minutes for the debate of all motions. That is, it's at your discretion whether or not to extend that. So if you want to extend that, you can. You may want to seek the views of the meeting.
I'm proposing, Chair, to actually extend the debate, but it's entirely up to the members, really. My recommendation is that we do. So I'm more than happy to do that. Is there anybody against that?
Yeah, I'm against this on the grounds that the last meeting, you were adamant I do not go over thirty minutes, but today, you've been flexible.
Chair? Anybody else against?
No, Chair, could I just make a proposal that in future, instead of just doing thirty minutes, that we give a time limit to each one? Because we always seem to be mucking about and don't get anything through. I mean, the people that go first can rattle on for ages if they want to. And the poor people in the end don't get any looking. So I'm proposing that we do something, that we give a three minute time to each one.
I think that should be a debate outside, not.
I'm making it debate then, so.
We will need to go through some process to achieve. But we have had a few people against my proposal.
Ultimately, it's at the discretion of the Chair, Chair. It's up to you.
I'm prepared to allow it to go ahead. So if everybody's happy to take part in that, we will continue to take part. Okay. Thank you very much.
If I can come in, please, Mr Chair. I have my hand up. Can I ask kindly? Do you need the name at the top of the notice of motion on agenda item nine and ten? It doesn't say who's proposing it. That is an error, the name of the one proposing the motion. It is on the agenda, but not on the actual agenda item. Apologies for that.
Point of order, Chair.
Sorry, what was that?
Point of order, can I make a point of order? You specifically said at the start of this section, "I must be concise because we were time limited." I was concise. I spoke for about two minutes in total, whereas other councillors spoke at great length. I deliberately made sure I kept within the time boundaries set by yourself. In December, you set those time boundaries. You are now deciding you can be flexible. Is this personal against me, or is this, you know, on a whim?
I think it isn't personal. It's not on a whim. I have taken some advice on this earlier. There are two. And one in particular item that I think should be discussed. It's just unfortunate that it happens to be at the very end of this list of motions. Motions are taken usually on the, the way they come in. The first comes in, gets first choice, and is on the list. So from my point of view, I think there are two motions that I think it would be very important for this council to listen and be part of. So that's a reason for my decisions. So I'm going to carry on. If people don't want to take part in that, then I suppose the one thing they can do is to actually remove.
I'm not against the motion per se. I'm just against the fact that I was told the rules and what to do. I followed the rules and they've changed.
It's holding the proceedings up, so we could get on with it.
No, I'll just shut up then, shall I? Because that's what you want me to do.
Right, good. Let's go on to the agenda item number nine, which is.
Can I quickly just raise a point of order here? For the two items remaining on the agenda now, are you going to set a time limit for those, or are we going to be allowed to discuss them indefinitely?
I was hoping that we could run, I haven't set a time limit on the first two motions, so I was hoping to run this last two items as they are. And if one of them is very short, then that's fine. One takes a little bit longer, then that's okay, and we'll just see them through. Because we have another item after this as well on the agenda. So I'd like to get on with it if I can, please. With everybody content. So we'll go on to agenda item nine, which is a motion brought by Tony Flynn. So Tony, can you bring your motion forward, please?
Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Chair. I, I think it's councillor Rachel Flynn, isn't it? Isn't it the, the women's motion?
Have you, have you, have you withdrawn your, your motion? Because you've not formally withdrawn your motion.
I, I never had a motion, Chair. I was only going to make an amendment.
Chair, can I come in, please?
Rachel Flynn, Chair.
Okay. Chair, can I?
Yes, please, Gary.
Okay. There were four motions on the agenda, Chair. They're on the agenda in the order that they were received. We were informed that the agenda item number nine was from councillor Tony Flynn. Agenda item number 10, notice of motion was from councillor Rachel Flynn. You've dealt with agenda item eight, which was the motion in respect of Cressaton High School brought by councillor Paul Pendleton. So on the agenda, you're now on agenda item number nine, which is the motion that was put forward by councillor Tony Flynn. And I think what you're doing is seeking confirmation as to whether or not that's been withdrawn.
Yes, I am. So that, that is now withdrawn, so we can go on to agenda item, agenda item 10, which is brought forward by councillor Rachel Flynn. So would you bring, bring your motion forward, please, councillor Flynn?
Thank you, Chair. So this, this motion came about and the motion put forward today is on behalf of the Women's Cross Party Group. The Women in Politics Group was formed after an in-depth conversation with the leader of the council, who agreed and acknowledged that there were definitely issues that needed dealing with regarding the way in which women were being treated in a political forum. The Women's Group met first in November and after a successful meeting, we decided that an internal process dealing with bullying and harassment was desperately needed, and this is the result of the cross-party meeting. So the notice of motion I bring forward today, in order that the council may encourage greater diversity and participation in the democratic process, it is important that there is a welcoming and inclusive culture. Sorry, am I reading the right one? I've just, I've got two, sorry, I've got two here. Could you read it out for me, please, Gary? Sorry, my iPad just keeps refreshing.
The notice of motion that we have on the agenda is as set out under agenda item number 10. And the notice of motion is, we ask the Dembisher County Council to take a more decisive stance with its grievance policy and procedure. In light of the updated Diversity and Equalities Act, we ask that the council forms a new internal procedure to ensure the behaviour of councillors can be held to account. We also ask that the council reviews its policies and procedure for reviewing grievances concerning bullying and harassment involving councillors, officers and others, whether it be virtually, physically or on social media. And then there are three bullet point recommendations. The first, that the Democratic Services Committee look at the current grievance process to ensure it is fit for purpose. Two, that the council create a diversity and ethics working group to examine how the council protects and promotes diversity and good ethics in Wales, including awareness of how women are still being treated unequally and the effects of misogyny and sexual discrimination on women. Three, that we're more forthright as a council in tackling unacceptable behaviour in any community, town or county council forum.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, do you want to say anything else on that, Rachel, or is it?
No, just that I hope councillors support us today. This is cross-party and if any of the other ladies would like to come in, that would be, that would be great. Thank you.
Chairman, can, am I, can I respond to this, please?
Chair, sorry, can I, can I jump in, Chair? What you need to do is to see whether you have a second for the motion and then ordinarily. Yeah, and then ordinarily, you would then ask the lead member, which is the leader, to respond to it. So if you just clarify a second.
Yes, can I, Harry Mellor, I think, was the second.
I, I will ask the leader to come in and, and respond to this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Rachel, for the motion. As lead member for Equalities and leader of the council, I am committed to ensuring that the council continually strives to place equalities at the heart of what we do. The council is committed to encouraging diversity and made a declaration in September last year to commit to becoming a diverse council. And the Democratic Service Committee will later this week be considering a draft action plan relating to some of the barriers to participation in local democracy. In terms of the disputes between members, a new legal duty on group leaders will take effect after the May elections to promote and maintain high standards of conduct amongst their groups. In addition, the recent independent pen review of ethical framework in Wales has reported to Wales Government and has made recommendations regarding the use of ambit of local resolution processes. We await the government's response to the review and details of any proposals to change guidance and/or legislation as a result. I would like to respond to the recommendations if, may Chair, contained within the motion as follows. Recommendation one, this recommendation refers to the local resolution process used to try and resolve issues between members of the county council on an informal basis without the need to involve the ombudsman. I agree that there should be a review of the process. I would propose that a working group of members be established to undertake a review and work with the Standards Committee and the Monitoring Officer to develop a suitable process in the context of the new duty to which I have referred and any changes introduced as a result of the pen review. In relation to recommendation two, the council did at one time have an equalities group, which was removed as part of the, of an agenda to mainstream equalities issues. However, there is ongoing work being done by Alan Smith's team to consider the establishment of an equalities group, and I would propose that this work should continue and take into account any overlap between equality issues and the ethical framework. And in relation to recommendation three, the council will provide support, training and guidance to town and committee councils, but it has no direct role in resolving disputes within those councils, other than through the ombudsman and Standards Committee. I would hope that as members, we would all be mindful of our responsibilities to treat each other with respect and consideration and that we would all challenge unacceptable behaviour when we see it. The review of our local resolution process to which I have referred earlier would be the appropriate mechanism to consider what changes need to be made in the context of the new duty on group leaders and the pen review. So what I would suggest, therefore, Chair, making the following amendments. To recommendation one, that a group of members be established to work with a monitoring officer and the Standards Committee to review the current local resolution process and make recommendations in respect of any changes to be adopted. For recommendation two, that officers work to establish proposals for an equalities diversity group to include an appropriate terms of reference. And in relation to recommendation three, that the council works with the town and committee councils to provide support and assistance within the context of the current ethical framework and any changes made as a result of the pen review. So, Chair, in conclusion, I do welcome the motion forward. It came in the back of a conversation that we had with all women on the council, and I see this as a consequence of that and moving the agenda forward in a positive sense. Do you have a word?
Thank you, thank you, Leader. It's a very positive step, so thank you for that. We've got a proposed, a proposal from the leader. We, we need a second, actually, Mark.
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you, so it's been. I've got Joan Butterfield's with her hand up and I've got Gwyneth, do you want to go to the vote first or what, what, what do you?
I, I think, I think it would, the women were anxious to speak on this because we did have obviously issues in and around there, but we do thank the men for supporting this, this motion. And I have no problems with it, but I'd just like to thank Rachel for bringing this to the table and to bring the motion forward. I'd like to thank the leader also for his vote of confidence and, and the amendments that he's made. And I would approve of all the three amendments that have been made and, and thank him for his intervention here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, okay, quickly, Gwyneth and then Merrick, and then we'll, we'll go to the, the vote.
Thank you very much. Yes, I attended the meeting called by the leader and it did, it was an interesting meeting. Certainly, I didn't see this, I, I didn't approve this. And I wouldn't say that it's on behalf of the cross-party meeting. Maybe I was the only one not to approve it, because there are things here that I would like to amend. And, but I can't amend until after Hugh's amendment has been heard, can I?
Apologies, Chair, may I come back to that and to Gwyneth? You, Gwyneth, everyone was emailed and then you replied as well and then it was sent back. So unless I heard from you, I did ask every single woman in that, member of that group, their opinion. So if you didn't come back to me, I'm sorry, you know, everybody else did.
I'll send you the email that I did send you. I'll resend it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Merrick Lord Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear. It's councillor Hu Evans, the leader's amendments, does that include men as well? Because it can happen to men. Can I respond, please, Chair? Yes, this applies to everyone. For me, it's the culture within the county council, how we need to show respect to each other, men, women, it covers everybody, Merrick.
You're happy with that, Merrick? Yep, okay. Okay, so we've, we've had an amendment, we've, we've had a response and shall we go to the vote? We've got a second for that. So all those in favour? Any against? Okay, one, I can see one hand against. Okay, so that, that's carried, so thanks very much for that. We go now on to agenda item 11, which is the young person's champion, so.
Chair, I think we need to confirm the amendment because there was a previous motion. Councillor, my recollection is as usual, is totally correct regards to the procedure.
Substantive motion. I do apologise, my attention was drawn to my screen elsewhere. So you do need to just confirm that the substantive motion is passed. And again, given the vote on the amendment, you may just want to ask for the assent of the meeting. Just to ask members to show whether they're in favour and ask again to confirm whether anyone is against or wishes to abstain.
Can one talk, can one debate during this?
Sorry.
The, the amendment has been passed. That's now the substantive motion. It means that if members wish to debate the substantive motion, then they may do so at the discretion of the Chair.
I, I don't see any need to, to debate the substantive motion and vote in, in view of the previous vote. So what I'm going to ask is that all those members who support the substantive motion, please raise their hands. Are there any against? One, one hand I can see. Okay, so that's, that's been passed. So thanks very much indeed, so.
I have it recorded, please.
Sorry?
But I have it recorded that I voted against.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Yes, Chair, we can, we can put that in the minutes that councillor Kinsley wished to have her vote recorded.
Yeah, come on, Gary.
Okay, so we're going on to agenda item 11, which is the appointment of young persons' champion. And I think you, you leading on this one, Gary?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Members will be aware that at a recent meeting, they confirmed that they wished to create the role of young persons' champion. And we said that we would bring a report back to council for council to appoint somebody to be young persons' champion. I have written to the political group leaders to ask if there were any nominations from their groups. And the two names that I've received is councillor Cheryl Williams on behalf of the Labour Group and councillor Rachel Flynn on behalf of the Conservative Group. So what you would need, Chair, would be to seek, if you like, formal proposal and seconding of those nominations and any other nominations that maybe wish to be made.
Thank you very much. So first of all, we've had a proposal of Cheryl Williams be put forward. Do we have a second for that?
Can I second that, Chair?
Yes, councillor Brian Brayley, and we also have a proposal.
My hand was up to, to put the Labour Party nomination forward on behalf of Cheryl Williams. Did have my hand up. I do realise it's been a little bit difficult this morning, but I, I would like to formally nominate councillor Cheryl Williams as the champion for the youth in Dembisher. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we, we do have a second, I believe. Yeah, councillor Brian Brayley, okay. So we've also had another nomination, which is Rachel Flynn. So if someone wants to.
Well, we just need somebody to formally propose.
I'm happy, I'm happy to propose Rachel Flynn, Chair.
You need a second for that.
I'm happy to second, Chair.
Okay, so we've got those two. So.
Just need to ask now, Chair, if there are any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? No, okay. So do we go for a straight vote on this, Gary?
I think Frodrj will be able to set up a Zoom poll, Chair, for members to be able to vote for the candidate of their choice. And I hand you over through you, Chair, to Frodrj, who'll be able to explain to members how that will work.
Okay. Okay, thanks very much. Thank you, Rod.
This poll's slightly different this time, members. There's offers, there's an option for Canhorith councillor Cheryl Williams or Canhorith councillor Rachel Flynn. I'll start the poll now and I shall let you know the results afterwards. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll give you a few, bit of time to vote on that and then we'll call it in. Thanks.
Just to let you know, if you haven't voted, I'm going to close the poll, poll now, and I shall let the Chair know the results. Thank you very much. So it is.
Okay, thank you, members, for that. We've had a vote of nineteen for councillor Cheryl Williams and fifteen for councillor Rachel Flynn. So congratulations and commiserations to both, but thank you for putting your new names forward. Thank you for that. So we'll now go on to agenda item 12, which is the council forward work programme, and I'll ask Gary to, to, to brief you on that, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the council forward work programme is as set out in the papers. So on the 22nd of February, we'll be receiving reports related to the climate strategy, the, the technical report related to the council tax, North Wales Population Needs Assessment Draft Report and recommendations of the Strategic Investment Group in respect of capital plan and the pay policy statement, which is required to be approved by council before the end of March each year. Members will see that on the 5th of April, there is a council meeting in the diary. It's our normal practice not to hold a full council meeting during the pre-election period for two reasons. There's a campaign ongoing and the publicity restrictions placed upon local authorities during the pre-election period mean that we avoid having public meetings during that period wherever possible. If there would be any items that required council approval before the end of this term, then we do have a council briefing in the diary on the 14th of March. And if needs be, that can be changed into a formal council meeting, should we need to do so. The pre-election period will begin on the 18th of March, therefore, any meetings before then would be okay.
Okay, thank you very much. So I think that brings us to the end of the, of our meeting. So thank you very much, everybody. It's, I make it 1:15, so. See everybody, thanks for the, for the meeting this morning. All have a good time and a good week and keep well. Thank you.